Evening. My name is Keith Tomano. I'd like to call this meeting to order. This is the Inland Wetlands Commission meeting for the town Monroe. Today's August 23rd, 2023, and the time is 7:08 PM. Everyone, please stand and recite the pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance to the flag, United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I will take a roll call while the members of the commission staff present their tonight's time in meeting. Please answer your presence, like myself, Keith Tomano, chairman. Derek Lindstrom, vice chair.
Here.
Brian Kelly's not here. Rick Smith.
Here.
Jim Stewart, who's a licensed surveyor and engineer in the state of Connecticut. Rick Schultz, our planning and zoning transition manager.
Here.
Dylan Willett, our planning and zoning administrator.
Here.
Cheryl Valerie, planning and zoning enforcement officer.
Here.
Sarah Stroud, recording secretary.
Here.
Thank you. Before we start, we'll read our mission statement and how the meeting will proceed. Inland Wetlands' mission statement, "The objective and purpose of the Inland Wetlands Commission is to provide for the overall protection, preservation of the inland wetlands and watercourses within the范 meeting procedure. Please note that this meeting is being conducted utilizing electronic equipment in compliance with State law, Public Act 21-1 as such. This meeting is being recorded and will be available to the public in compliance with state law. You are attending remotely. Please remember to mute your microphone unless speaking. Anyone participating remotely should state their name and title at the outset of each occasion that such person is speaking. All votes taken during which any member of this body or participating remotely shall be taken by roll call unless the vote is unanimous. The chat features will not be utilized nor considered during this meeting. The normal course of our meetings will hear public hearings and other applications. Protocol of a public hearing is to have an applicant make a presentation to the commission during which and after which the commission will be asking the applicant questions. As the applicants keep their presentations as concise as possible. The commission will then review town, staff, and other independent comments. Meeting will then be open for public comment. I will ask that all comments be made through the chair of the commission. After any and all comments pro and opposition over general nature are made, the applicant will be given an opportunity to respond. Please keep comments or questions direct, or a timely or three minutes may be imposed. It is not necessary that the applicant respond, but generally in their best interest to do so. There will be no further opportunity for new questions unless new material enter in as evidence or testimony during their response. Please keep all comments pro and con, inland wetlands related matters. Other applications do not involve a public hearing will follow similar format with the exception that there will be no public comments allowed. The meeting follows our public agenda unless otherwise amended. Are there any changes to the agenda? Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, I would note that we have our town engineer, James Tameo, present remotely.
Present. Okay. Okay, this is our general public participation portion. Is anybody here in the public today that wants to speak or address this commission? How anything related to wetlands matters that is not either before us right now or soon to be before us? Please raise your hand.
I did my questions that are already been answered.
Okay. Alright, so let's do the with the commission's approval of Dylan Willett as wetlands agent. Is that how you see it last time?
What about?
Alright, can we get a motion? Let's move to a point. Dylan, Commissioner Lindstrom, second.
Second.
Second from Professor Stewart to approve Dylan Willett as our wetlands agent. All in favor? Aye. Motion passing ends. Application acceptance regular hearings, hearing information. IDWC 2023-05, file 1447-5, Victoria Drive, proposed field expansion in upland review area. R. Nunez, Ole Two LLC, owner applicant, solely engineering LLC, representer.
Mr. Chairman, you have a resolution in your packets as a draft. It was accepted at the last meeting and presentation was made, so you could potentially vote on this matter tomorrow.
Cheryl, can you designate it? Do you want to share?
Yes.
I think it's already shared, I know. Share the meeting?
Alright, good evening all. Chris Kloski, my vice project engineer in Connecticut, work with solely engineering, located in Holland, Maine. Here, we have the applicants talk about the five Victoria Drive. I also have Jesse Shuck from our office with me, who wants to speak in a few moments about the landscape thing and the invasive species removal, and then we can look forward to this project. So we're here to discuss five Victoria Drive. The project's been implemented several times in the past. First, development of industrial building, associated soccer field, which we're going to talk about today. And then more recently, two years ago, for a larger indoor practice facility never constructed. The property is located at five Victoria Drive. Town Monroe, Town and Trumpa border is here, Route 25 runs north south. You head down Victoria Drive, second property. This is a more recent area, so if you look here, we have the existing holey soccer training building. There's a parking lot that extends to the rear here, entrance is off Victoria Drive right here. And then we've had the existing there's the gravel trail, a large area back here. Hypermeans on the server, it's mostly just mowed and maintained. Then you have a lower well and pocket here. Here, there's a chronic river, these troughs. So we're here to talk about the proposed field expansion. As part of this project, the existing field is approximately 114 feet by 128 feet deep. Seeking to expand the field to 200 feet by 55 feet deep. So about 15 feet on one side and 25 feet on the other. The reason for this is we're constructing currently only place seven on seven soccer games. Our client's looking to expand and have nine on nine and full team games, if you will. So our plan involves the expansion of the field in this direction here. There's currently a swell that's shown along the edge. It's going to slide over. And then we're going to be struck in 800 square foot open wall outdoor pavilion. Just a couple of benches underneath, so that people can watch their children or friends play soccer. So currently, we're looking at serving about 0.45 acres as part of this. It is located within the upland review area. So again, the wetlands that you just saw, pretty much like, they're dominated by the screen right here. If you travel around, there's a structure pocket here. Then you have a chronic river that's closed this way. And connects into the well of the pocket right here. All of our work is going to be associated in this area, which I have a zoom of. So again, this is our proposed field expansion, so the existing building is down in this corner. You see the parking lot here, 800 square foot open wall pavilion. New drainage swell through the area, and the fence which was placed on the outside. This project is going to decrease the impervious area by 6,500 square feet approximately. So we're going to make that all, it's going to be a natural field expansion. It currently is natural grass, if you will. There's not turf out there currently. There's not turf proposed in the future. So that is essentially our plan. And again, green liner represents the wetlands. You see, there's a lot of pockets here and here. This side, a chronic river on this side. And then essentially, pretty much all the project is located within the upland review area, which is why we're here before you. After we come before you, we will seek a P and Z permit as well for the proposed work. But this red line indicates the upland review area. So everything for the field is, is with what is the red line. It's all the upland review areas that we are currently in. So again, quick highlights, 15 feet expansion in one direction from the parking lot, right here. 25 foot wide expansion in this direction. And then 800 square foot open wall outdoor pavilion and the relocation of drainage swell. So this is our post-grading plan. We're essentially just taking the existing field grades here. And just extending across the field, so you see the thorough lines here. That ties in the grades. There's a swell that'll direct the water. That will be existing, this is actually a stormwater basin that was constructed as part of a prior approval. It's now fully grown with vegetation, it's thus a wetland. We're now changing into the existing drainage patterns. And we are just, you know, relocating that swale. So decreasing the impervious area, everything else, town engineer had reviewed our application and we responded to some comments. Right, don't believe there are any further comments at this point, but I will leave that to James. So you're probably wondering why we are pulling the slope in a little bit here. The site is located within the 100 year floodplain, so we do provide a little bit of compensatory storage. The job is a net export of about 16 cubic yards. You're not allowed to fill it from the floodplain, so we have to provide this necessary pullback degrees over here to provide that compensatory storage. So overall, though, from an earthwork perspective, there's 16 cubic yards, just approximately one truck up there that's going to be hauled out of here. This is our soil erosion settlement control plan. So you can see we've got hay bales and silt fence or a mulch berm showing along wetland edge here. There's an anti-tracking pad construction entrance. There's erosion stabilization and seed mix that's going to go all throughout here, which Jesse will talk about in a second. And then we have a stockpile for where the material will be piled before they place the topsoil, because they're going to have to strip the topsoil, stockpile it, and then spread it back out over the field when they achieve the final grades. And again, everything's been designed in accordance to 2002, kind of a sort of a control. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Jesse Shuck. He is a licensed arborist and also landscape architect on ours.
I want to address questions to your presentation first.
We're going to just present on this and then, oh, enough information, that's okay, if you will.
Sure.
Tonight's my first night speaking in front of you guys, so it's a pleasure. Thank you. As Chris mentioned, my name's Jesse Shuck. I am a senior landscape designer and licensed arborist for Victoria. The landscape manager of this. Here you can see early guidelines by Cheryl Valerie. Thank you for your due diligence. Follow these guidelines where we've marked which trees we're going to need to be removed for the field expansion, which you may have three acers here and one more tree here, so it's more than four trees. I also put a tree protection on the border. I decided to introduce more trees than we're taking out, just add more trees to the site. So we have two large overstory trees here, both of them acer genus, great trees. And then I decided to add five trees to the border here. Four anilactir canidensis, which is a Connecticut native fantastic tree. And also one serves as canidensis, which is known as eastern redwood, also native. For the seed mixes, we're going to do a lawn here, which will need to be maintained. But we also decided to do a new England erosion control restoration, no mow mix, which is not needed for maintenance, so this will grow in. And it's great for pollinators. It will increase, just build up the buffer along the wetlands, so it's going to support that as well. And then I also went out and did invasive plants. So I ground truth the area, all this hatch here, you can see that's where my eyes were and that's where I was looking for the invasives. There were a prevalent amount, I would say. There was about 10 species I found. The five most prevalent and period of concern were the tree of heaven, which is a rather tall tree and actually, interesting enough, is the host plant for our new invasive insect, the spotted lanternfly. We had mugwort all throughout. That was the most prevalent. That's about two to three feet tall around the border of wetlands. We had oriental bittersweet, which is a large plant. We had the autumn olive, which grows to be a rather large tree. And the Japanese knotweed, which is one of the worst and most prevalent invasives. I take invasives and their control methods very serious. I put together a methods of invasive control list on the plan. These are not my personal recommendations, although professionally I do agree with them. These are straight regulations and I, control methods from DEDP and from the Connecticut Agriculture Experiment Station, who I worked under Craig Luthby, who is M and I for the invasive aquatic plant program, which I helped run, a little about me, but anyways. That's, this is the control method we have. It's both mechanical and chemical. I was a plant healthcare manager for 10 years, diagnosing and treating insect and fungal diseases. So using pesticides, insecticides, and herbicides is always, should be the last option to help protect our natural environment. The mechanical methods are very clear here. We can do mowing, weeding, whacking with tools or by hand. We can also do pulling and cutting, which would be by hand. And then there's also a suffocation method, which would be laying a landscape fabric or some sort of tarp onto the plants, which will deprive them of oxygen and light and kill them off. Mechanical methods work. They're very intensive. We could get a crew in there to pull and weed whack. One issue is it would have to be in perpetuity until we found that the invasives were controlled. Another problem that's very important is disposing of anything that's cut down or weed whacked. It's very important that any invasive plant that we decide to re, for cut down does not stay on site and is removed and disposed of. Unfortunately, the nature of invasives, chemical intervention is usually the main method of control. So we'll have foliar sprays and we'll also have what's known as the cut stem treatment, which I'm familiar with. I want to be clear that these are both highly controlled ways of maintaining and controlling these invasives. It's not a professional spraying large amounts of pesticides or herbicides into the air. The foliar would be specifically targeted with a selective or non-selective herbicide. And then the cut stem is actually mechanically cutting and then filling or painting the leftover material with herbicides that will slowly kill and take away. I have two things that we can, for this project, to hire a professional. It's very important that we work with someone who is licensed and experienced in this. All habitat, David Roach is the owner. Grant Purton, they are invasive control specialists. And then we can always refer to Craig Luthby, the head scientist in the invasive aquatic section of the Connecticut Agriculture Experiment Station. All the methods are approved by DEEP. And they, really a case by case basis, certain species need certain methods. Some are controlled better with chemicals, some are controlled better with chemicals. We can leave that up to the professionals to make that. Thank you. Thank you, Jesse. At the time, I might open up to any commissioner comments on this very presentation.
Can you go back to your first page, Chris, that you presented? No, maybe the grade plan? What's happening with the old path?
The old path is currently not utilized. So there was plans in two years ago to build a large indoor practice facility in this entire area. And they kept the path because they were going to park here. Ultimately, those plans fell through and they never explored that option, so they just mow this essentially at this point. So all you need to do is just use a mower to get through here, which it can. That's why I'm not supposed to for a zero turn, then it's going to keep maintaining it. But there's no intention of any cars or anything going back there.
Well, is it going to be cut off by the field?
The field is ending right here. But yes, it would be cut off by the field essentially. See the fence with the dots? That's their heads line. So that's the field and the swell. And there's like a berm through here and you can just come up with a mower and get back here and mow it. But there's no intention of any cars going back there or any people coming back.
So is anything other than gravel being removed or is there asphalt?
There is gravel. It's a gravel path, so you can kind of see it.
The whole thing is gravel?
No, just see this faint gray line here and here? That's the gravel. The rest is just like a meadow, if you will.
Okay. Why do you have any anti-tracking pad for the 16 yards that are coming out?
It's a necessary erosion control measure.
Can we eliminate it?
If you're interested.
Because how much dura are you going to dig out to put the anti-tracking pad and then have to bring back?
I mean, the area is getting removed anyways, like there's parking underneath here for the most parking. So the anti-tracking pad.
I thought it looked like it was only for the but it looks like it's headed towards that where you're doing the compensatory storage.
Right, because that's where the, that's where the removal is going to be essentially.
The 16 yards.
Yeah, one truck, right.
Can you eliminate it?
We can look into a limit.
And they're also bringing in.
Yeah, we're bringing in material.
Not in there, not from there. Is that your answer?
Mr. Chairman, if I may. Sorry, James Tameo, town engineer. Yeah, as long as it could be eliminated, as long as, I just have to double check their notes. As long as there's some street sweeping or sweeping of the parking lot, they should be able to eliminate that.
Okay. Yeah, because I just think it's more soil disturbance that's not necessary, in my opinion. The, okay, so this invasive thing. You're not, nowhere in those plans is there anything about like machinery digging out plants on the riverbed, like the river side of the stream? It's all by hand?
My name's Jesse Shuck. No, no machinery would be necessary.
Okay, what, in the course of this this time you're going to take to remove those invasives? There's no other invasive anywhere offsite that will repopulate the area?
I ground truth the area you see on site. I didn't go outside any of the property lines.
Like is there Javvis knotweed on the other side of the stream? That's just going to, is just going to migrate over to the other side, you know, within the following year? If it's only on this property that has the invasive.
Like I said, I ground truth inside of this property line, but I didn't see any as far as the eye can see.
So what's the, what's the level of, of long-term success by going through this whole operation?
Good question. Invasives are very aggressive. I mean, they're one of the biggest problems in our landscape. I think any step you move to control them is a good step. That answers your question.
So say it last time?
Any control methods that we put forth to slow or stop invasives in this property is going to further add less and less that they're taking control of the environment.
And what about a simple, just maintenance where they just cut it back? Well, I think you mentioned that is possible. So no ca, no chemical, but just cut it back, you know, lay the tarp on it if they want, but just kind of like as a, as a buy, you know, twice a season, you know, cut back and removal.
Containment method, essentially.
Yeah, it's basically just, you know, cut it down aesthetically again for two or three months. It grows back, cut it down again. So you stay away from the chemical part. You can stay away from, you know, you can get in there and cut all the bigger trees, you know, with a chainsaw, cut those, get rid of them, and just, just cut it back. You know, two, three, however the owner feels, if they're trying to enhance the property, like and they trim everything else on the property, they're going to do the same thing. And then it kind of just puts it on them to, you know, make it look the way they want it to look, present it.
It would have to be done in perpetuity, but I would agree that an annual or biannual maintenance program of taking out all those invasives, as aggressive as that would be and as much work that would be, that will be.
It also doesn't require them to keep a contract with any specialty company? Because anybody can go in there and just cut the stuff to get a dumpster delivered, throw it in the dumpster? It's done, right? If that's easier for, for your client, I'd be, I'd personally be okay with that.
Certain, certain invasive species can be done, can be controlled, I should say, easily mechanically by pulling. Others are much more aggressive, like the knotweed fragmites, the larger woody plants like the willow and the autumn olive. Those would be cut down to the base. The branches and foliage would be taken off site and disposed of property. And then the cut stem method was, they would treat that basal section now with a herbicide. Very controlled, very selective, and that would eliminate that plant forever. That's really where the chemical intervention is best, because it is the most powerful control method.
Right.
But yes, all those methods that we put in the plan, including the mechanical, will technically control the invasives according to DEEP.
So how long does that take? Does that chemical, it's a one time, you do it once? So you hire a company that licensed to, to put that chemical down that one time and that's it? And then the rest of it's, whatever grows back, you, you cut it back?
We'd take care of a large majority of the plants with the chemical intervention at first. And then what that allows you to do, this is just me professionally speaking, that, that allows you to do is take a large majority of the problem away. And then there's less area you have to cover, less plants you have to control. So then you can move forward on a less aggressive, more organic approach like pulling or mechanical.
Right. Okay. Alright, well, I'll open up to the other commissioners. Rick, do you have any?
You had mentioned that, I totally understand that from a business viewpoint, it's really most effective to use a combination of mechanical and chemical. And I appreciate that, and we're not trying to financially burden you, but these wetlands are really, these ecosystems are very sensitive. And you're, I mean, you look at the amount, I walked the property. I had permission from the company to walk the property a couple of times. And, and there's a lot of, of water there in that, in that small pond and that, the river right, right there. I mean, it's not like you can get away with it. So, and I'm not, although I'm not an expert on glyphosate and all the other chemicals, I just, personally, I wouldn't use it in my own home. So I gotta, I want to ask you a question of, personally, what would you do? I mean, you said you did it, you did it, you did it from a viewpoint of business. I totally understand. Most effective things, just spray them, cut them, put them on there. You know, it's a higher toxicity to do the stems and, you know, it's effective. And hopefully it'll come back and use the right, right herbicide for the right, because mugwort doesn't go with glyphosate and you have to use something different and it'll come back or whatever. You know, I, I understand, and I understand also that professional application of this is key. You don't want it from solely viewpoint. You don't, you don't want to do it yourself. You want to have somebody who's totally certified, you know. My thing is less glyphosate in the world is better. So I really don't, really want to approve any kind of chemicals, but I'm not an expert. So you, you talked about having an invasive species removal company come in. I totally agree with your direction you're heading in is, well, let's do the, do the mechanical. And I understand it's, we got to go back and do it twice a year, but, you know, that's what we do in town with a, with a number of other wetland locations. I have one in my neighborhood that gets mowed twice a year and, and we don't really have a, a good strategy on how to deal with invasive species. We really should, because we should have a battle on this. You understand, Jesse, how important it is. And, and I understand we're going to have an expert come in during our November public meetings in the fall to talk about chemicals. I, I'm not, you know, although I, I won't do it myself. I, I don't want to be ignorant and say, oh, nobody should ever use, you know, and totally ban it, because there is fights and there is, well, there's, as I mentioned last time, $12 billion bears putting up to, to defend the use of herbicides and specifically glyphosate. So that just tells me that something's up. So that just tells me that something's up. You don't spend it if it was a clear decision and the World Health Organization says it's carcinogenic and EPA says, well, we're not convinced yet. We don't see, we don't see a smoking gun. So I, so I, I hesitated to, to agree to this, or I would hesitate to agree to the draft resolution unless we stip, stipulate some, something. And I'm not, and I'm open, I'm, I'm not just.
Let's ask the question.
Sorry. So instead of rambling on, I'll, I'll put it to other commissioners. What do you guys think?
Well, I don't, I don't know if that we have, if it's a DEEP-approved process, I don't know that we can order it not, you know, change that. I don't, I don't know. I don't know if like some things you're, you're granted to do at the state level and we might not have the ability to, to say no to it. But they're also offering only the stem treatment, which is very, I've done it myself personally. It's just, it's like taking a paintbrush and you just paint the, the stem. And, you know, you're not spraying, it doesn't come out of a sprayer or foam bro, whatever they do. So to me, I think that is the best of both worlds. If you put it together, you get a little bit of chemical and then you get mostly mechanical. But, but again, I don't know if we can, if we could not cause a problem by trying to ban, trying to say we can't do a process that's approved by state. Now, I don't know the answer to that. It is a question though. But let's, let's see what the other guys.
One point, drinking is legal. That doesn't mean that I'm going to drink and drive. Chemicals are legal, herbicides are legal, but that doesn't mean you do it in a wetland. So I get you, but I also, and I also understand the toxicity of a cut stem is much higher than a foliar application. So I did contact DEEP and just because they say it's legal, then they hedge. Because they don't want to say it's not, it's not, it's legal, but we don't necessarily, we, like you said, the best way is mechanical. Problem is coming back. So that's why I'm, I'm deferring to a professional to say what you're saying, Keith. Is that, you know, maybe we, maybe we do insert applications. I've, I've looked at the specific applications and, you know, this is what we think is necessary. It's just, you know, contained, very, very limited, but, you know, professional, not.
Let's see. Anything?
So haven't you had any experience with problems with this method, chemical application? That you can speak to, say, well, we had this happen or I've done this this many times and we've not. Maybe you can give us a little history of effective.
To be clear, I, I haven't personally done herbicide. I was using insecticide and fungicides. However, I understand your passion, Mr. Smith. The problem would be that you need a licensed, experienced professional go in there and use his professional judgment. Anyone worth their salt will understand the species, understand the control methods, understand the timing, understands the chemicals they're using. Work professionally, adhere to the label on the chemical bottle and make the decisions that will have the most efficacy, the most control, but have at the least amount of negative impact on the environment. Me personally, I haven't had any problems with chemical treatments because like I said, in my capacity, they were very controlled and thoroughly thought through, based on science.
A big question. In my, in my experience and where I work, we do a lot of roadside mowing. Mowing is great. It works for about a month and a half and then it comes back and, and it's going to, you'll never get rid of it. Mow twice, three times, four times a year and it just, it just keeps coming back. If you want it gone, you're going to have to use chemicals or dig it all out. And I assume we're not going to dig out, dig down a foot along the wetlands. We're not doing that. So you guys have to determine if you really want the invasives gone. If you don't care, then just leave them there because you're not going to get them out by mowing them. They're just going to come back and stronger than ever. So there's my, there's my opinion.
I'm with you on it. I, I'm okay with doing nothing, like.
Well, I didn't say that, but I.
You said, you said, do not, you do not.
I said, if you don't, if you don't want to use chemicals, then, then you might as well just let them mow it if they want.
Right, that's what I, I, I think, you know, you're right, you're right with that. I mean, where is it that, I know there's some, there's got to be somewhere where they, you know, they want invasives removal. You know, like you said, they're going to come back. They're always going to come back unless you control every, we can't control where the birds.
They're going to migrate right back.
Their number two. And if they're going to do their number twos in a tree over that area and that's the fertile area for, for that particular plant, it's going to be back. So.
What does your client want?
So we're, we're open to either. I mean, we're not prochemical, it is the most efficient way. So we'll do, the commission wants us to mow and just understand, as Jesse stated, that we're not going to eliminate them that way, but we will happily do that. Or we prefer, or we prefer to spot tree, as he's mentioned, cut them and paint on the stem.
I think for aesthetic, aesthetic purposes, it's his, it's up to him. Right? So if, if you, you can go in there and cut everything down, you know, without using, you know, you can get a permission to use chemicals here, but do all of us want, do all of us want to see that these invasives get eliminated? Like literally killed? Or is it, we leave it up to them aesthetically? And say, no, we can tell them, we don't, we don't care that in five years that the whole thing is wiped out of invasives. He can do as he pleases.
Did we specifically request for them to remove?
That was voluntary.
So you voluntarily said.
That was a comment for.
So, so staff usually has been asking if they're going to remove them, if there are any, and what their plans are to remove them. But now that the commission really wants to develop a policy based on the science of it, and that's going to be happening in the fall, we don't have that policy in place yet.
Right.
You know.
It's bad.
So.
I mean, we could do, we, you know, the one, they could do the one time. You know, it does, it does sometimes beneficial because if it does eliminate, say, those, those faster woody growing plants, the maintenance is less down the line. Obviously, you guys have presented to us, I think, as professional as of, of a presentation on how you're going to deal with it. You know, like hiring one of those two firms, right? Is that correct? Which to have a reputation as being very good in the, in the industry. I've spoken with them in the past about projects. I mean, it's.
I mean, I guess it comes down, do we want them to eliminate it or just cut it back? So, I mean, I think maybe the.
Well, they're presenting to us, right? So they're presenting a plan to us. If they, they have the opportunity now to adjust their presentation and change something. And we get accepted as it is. You know, this, it is an issue that comes up on all, all these bigger projects. And I did one, I did one in town before I was a commissioner. And I did everything that we were supposed to do. And you drive by and it's exactly as it was before I started. And that was like eight years ago, seven years ago. Because the Japi's knotweed is across the street, 59, on the other side of the road. It's just a matter of time before it seeds or whatever it is that it spreads. Yes, it's all, yeah, you got to do everything. You got to do everything and it's not possible, in my opinion. So I guess, is that, is that not, is that, is that you've seen issue with them withdrawing from the chemical part of this?
It's the commission's decision if they want to have invasive species removal at all or what kind of treatment there is based on what DEEP allows. So if the commission says, you know, we're not, we don't want to have that be a part of the application or approval.
Right, because they can always come, once we've established the, the guidelines that we're going to do in the fall, they can always come, the owner can always come in and get a staff approval, right? To do, hopefully after we're done, we're going to have something.
Develop a policy.
Policy. So it's not like we're saying they can never do it, but as far as this application is concerned, they can withdraw this part of it. Now, what's going to happen though? You were planning on planting in these areas where the invasives were coming out? How are you going to do that if the treatment is going to be long-term?
Now, so we're not planning on planting in the area of invasives. We're outside of it.
Oh, it's only the stuff in the front? I, it's only the stuff in the front, in the shaded area?
It's only in the hatched areas, yeah.
Okay, so what are you going to do? What were you going to do to treat anything that became barren earth after your application?
Have the erosion control mix.
Mix?
No mow and that will spread through fragmentation seeding. So we're hoping that that will fill in any voids.
Okay, so if you don't, if you decide to withdraw that part of the application, then you don't have to go through any of that, right? Because you're just going to leave it as it is. You decide to do a mechanical removal, being like a maintenance kind of, like you're just cutting it down whenever they feel fit, you still don't have to do it, right? Because you're not removing, you're not going to be destroying the root, the root system that is holding the bank together. Correct? So the plants are going to stay alive. You're just going to maintain them for aesthetic purposes. Cut them down, they're going to grow back. Just like cutting, mowing your lawn, except for you, you know, it's not every week you're going to do it. You might do it every month, month and a half, whatever the case may be, right? So if you do that, then that's just totally an aesthetic thing. So you kind of have a, we're giving you an option here.
Yeah, I mean, yeah.
The problem.
To be clear, we were.
I would just say that the commissions should make a condition of whether they're going to have it, part of it or not. If you're not going to, it can be, you can make it a condition that that's not part of.
I'm allowing them the opportunity to withdraw that part of the, like that part of the.
You talk about the invasive species management in general?
You always could do it. You don't, you don't have, this is part of your application. If you want to withdraw that part of it, meaning that none of us are in favor of chemical, right? If we don't have to. And you're saying that the only way to get a long-term result is to use chemical or any substantial result. So we're at this like impasse, but we also kind of said, and excuse me, I'm wrong, but, you know, we're also not concerned that it, that it gets done, right?
I believe our client prefers that it keeps it as a, as a, as a, as a, as a basis. That makes sense. So we're not going to move chemical or that part of it out. And I believe our client just maintains it as it is, just on stage essentially.
You can make it part of a, of the, of your final.
Yeah, we, we have a final plan, this is the method we're going to go with. But that's the direction that I believe we'd like to go for. So we will make the, the chemical.
Yeah. So I get it with regard to the history of it. And like I said, if you, if you get professional and, and whatever, it's all good. But just the use of chemicals, and it's not just, you know, this particular application, but there's glyphosate in our Cheerios. Our kids are eating Cheerios with, you know. So I, I just want to limit that. So I, I see what you say, but on the other side, I, I, I want this battle on invasive species to happen. It's really important. We're going to find that out in November.
Correct.
It's, it's, it's not something we just say, oh, we're just not going to, we're just going to let them, let them overrun. No, I think you should do a, a, a good effort with mechanicals as much as possible. I was open to hearing about using chemicals later, but if we want to get it off of the desk and, and say, okay, you know, I, I, I just, you know, I don't say, except I guess, you know, is there a condition that we could say as far as, you know, coming back later with, with, you know?
Can have it both ways.
Right, right.
It's got to be a condition of approval and it's approved. And if they, if they ever came back for a modification or if they came back for a new application to do something else on site, that's the applicant view area, then.
I just don't want to, don't want to blank check to, okay, just use it, but be prudent. I get it, but I don't know, I'm, you know.
Yeah, to be clear, these weren't my, I had no bias or opinion in this. I'm not prochemical, mechanical. My job was to ground truth the property, identify the invasives and put together a method of control list, which I referenced DEEP as the methods of control.
So they are willing to spend some money on, on at least the mechanical side. And I think they should do the best effort that they could with mechanicals. And if we want to just stake that, if we want to get this through tonight and say mechanicals only, that's fine. But I, I don't want you to just say, okay, well, well, mow it once and leave it alone.
They're going to put a, they'll put a, they'll put a maintenance schedule as part of the approval, right? And the, they're going to tell us, they're going to tell us what they're going to do, how they're going to do it, the frequency they're going to do. It'll be part of the approval, but we, you know, we're not going to force it for 20 years. I mean, it's going to be for a period of time and then they got to decide.
Okay, all right. So I think we have some concurrence.
I lost my train of thought, sorry. So forget it, next train.
Move on.
Any other questions? Do you have any answer? Otherwise, we'd like to close the meeting.
Would you like to close the meeting?
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you for your time.
All right, so let's move on to IWC. Was there anything that had to be added to that?
I, I have a couple lists of the, of the conditions I wrote down that.
Well, that'd be deliberation. But nothing to enter into the record like.
Nothing has been submitted since.
Okay, all right. Now we're at IWC 2023-07, file 1452, 421 Web Circle. Propose construct a new single-family residence, well-inspiration adjacent to wetlands, P N, the owner.
Mr. Chairman, you received this application at your last meeting and the applicants made their presentation. The only condition or request that the commission had at that time was to relocate the inland wetland markers along the limit of disturbance, which the applicants had done and revised the plan as such. So you can have, if you have some questions.
Yeah, do you have any questions on this?
Deliberation.
The changes.
Yes, yes. The only thing that are things, things that are happening in the upland review area are the house itself and a well.
Which we all looked at.
Correct, and then there's a connecting part.
Do they have any further questions on this?
Inland wetlands, I don't see any reason why we should block this.
Like to close this?
Please.
With the deliberation, thank you.
Thank you.
IWC 2019-06-K1, file 1226, 269 Purdy Hill Road. Request a men permit to allow existing single-family residents to remain. Reduce overall acreage of lot from 10.095 to 9.011 acres. Include relocation of previously approved footing drain, outfall adjacent to a wetland.
Mr. Chairman, the, the commission saw this again last meeting and had no comments or, or concerns at that meeting. So we have a draft motion.
Do you have anything else?
It's just, it's just interesting, you know, why would the decision be? I mean, if they put it up one way and we approve it, why are they coming back and saying, you know what? Can we have our house back?
Well, that's more of a finding of ownership.
Yeah, I guess it is.
So as far as the wetlands go.
Yeah, right, again, from the inland wetlands, I guess.
From a wetland perspective, right?
Sorry.
Okay, so. Do I, is the app, will close this or are we, is it closed? Was it closed?
If they're just regular meetings, so if we were, were willing to go to deliberation, you can just move into deliberation.
All right, we'll move this one to deliberation. All right, deliberation session. Do these first?
Five Victoria.
Yeah.
Maybe we go to five Victoria.
Right, before we do, okay. Okay, deliberation, I completely, I completely agenda as determined by the commission. All right, IWC 20 dash, I'm sorry, 2023-05, file 1447, five Victoria Drive. Proposed field expansion in the upland interview area. Arunaze, Way Two LLC, owner applicant, soil engineering LLC representative. So we have a draft, right? For some reason, I don't have that copy. I might have just lost it. I'm actually. But I think I'm, anyways, you want to make an amendment? You want to add to that? What, what does it say about the?
So I had two areas that you can write conditions down. Obviously, you can add as many as you want. But I had written down removal of tracking pad in the plans and then a maintenance schedule as far as invasives go. If you wanted to add anything to that or amend it.
Anything that? Everybody wants to add? Or we're going to make a motion to approve the draft resolution with amendments?
Motion to approve the draft resolution as amended.
We have a motion to approve the draft resolution as amended from Commissioner Stewart, the second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lynch, all in favor?
Aye. Motion passed unanimously.
IWC 2023-07, file number 1452, 421 Web Circle. Propose construct a new single-family residence, well-inspiration adjacent to the wetlands, P N, owner. You don't really have anything, right? So.
We're no conditions mentioned at the last meeting since they had revised their.
So we have a motion to approve this application. Motion to approve it, Commissioner Lynch, second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Stewart, all fair?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed unanimously. IWC 2019-06-K1, file 1226, 269 Purdy Hill Road. Request a men permit to allow existing single-family residents to remain and reduce overall acreage of lot from 10.095 to 9.011 acres. Includes relocation, free to improve footing drain, outfall adjacent to a wetland. Motion approved. Motion approved by Commissioner Lynch, second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Stewart, all fair?
Aye.
Motion passes. Manusually. Okay, so now we're at immediate commission deliberation. IWR 2023 dash zero two, file 1450, 36 Hammer Town Road. Proposed wetland investment plan as a result of clearing just some wetlands and buffer area, area.
So at the last meeting, um, the applicants were here, um, and spoke with the commission and the planting plan was reviewed. Um, since that time, it's been revised. Revisions included, um, just some, uh, planting, uh, changes. Um, still, you know, um, dedicate native species that staff didn't have a problem with. Pin oak to white oak and, uh, red oja dogwood to high粱, so blueberry, and then moving the inland wetland markers from the inside of the planting area to the outside of the buffer area, so.
Looks good.
I would like a motion to approve. Uh, motion by Commissioner Smith to approve, the second?
Second.
Second by, all in favor?
Aye.
Manusually. Right, I know you made the motion, but I, here. I assume so, but I want to be sure. Okay, so, um, next thing is the letter. So we're at public hearing, IWC 2023 dash zero three, file 1439, um, 139 and 41 to 123 Road, 30 copies at court. Proposed construction, I9, single-family, fat dwelling served by community wasteland system with proposed regulated activities in the upland review area, 40 year social to LLC owner, applicant, J. Ederson, social LLC representative. After request, automatic public hearing and submission continued from 6/28/23 tabled until 9/13/23. Want to read this letter? Please accept it.
Just accept it, yeah.
Um, so I make a motion to accept this letter?
You can accept that one?
Motion from, uh, Commissioner Lynch, the second?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Stewart, all in favor?
Aye.
Uh, three in favor, one abstaining.
Abstaining, I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm saying. And we can't make any kind of NDDB request, huh, at this point?
No.
Okay.
Sorry, Barbara, later.
I would just also make a, um, a comment, uh, just into the record that the letter from, uh, Russo and Rizio, um, asked that the public hearing be held and be tabled until September 27th. That's, I had to mention that.
It's, uh, you don't want it, I'm using myself in the rest of the meeting.
Yes, later.
Thank you.
All right, so next we have on the list, IWC dash A304, 1446, 260 Spring Hill Road. Uh, excavating and filling in an unpaved, I'm sorry, upland review area for proposed development of a building driveway and parking area. Eldorado Holdings LLC owner applicant, uh, Rose Tizzo. Ended from 7/27.
And Mr. Chairman, we have a couple of new exhibits. Exhibit number eight, response to engineering comments by Rose Tizzo, number nine. Town engineer comments, number 10. Wetlands agent letter to applicant, number 11. Town engineer comments, number 12. Wildlife inventory from William Kenny. 13. Wetland buffer and planting plan by William Kenny. 14, revised wetland and planting plan, William Kenny, that is all, Mr. Chairman.
Were those in our packets, sorry? I have 11, 12, 13.
14 is going to be handed out tonight, as you know.
14. 14. 5, 9, got one of those, thanks.
Advised since then.
8, 21, perfect. Okay. Maybe you have to take it a little bit back to the top.
Good evening, Pat Rose from Rose Tizzo and Company, 35 Roman Avenue, representing Eldorado Holdings LLC. Since the last public hearing, we have, uh, endeavored to respond to Cheryl's letter on people who've taken information and, uh, required one of the things to be done is to. Cheryl.
Sure.
So one of the things that the topic came back from Bill Kenny's review of the project was to add a 20-foot buffer in wetlands in this area. We have done in our, go by two drawing and also a 20-foot buffer. That, that's been done, there is changes to a tracking pad. Check dams, but that was the main thing plus, also, uh, we have decided that it's part of, you know, trying to help mitigate what we're doing associated with the review area and, and areas because now we created a planting plan, which I'll have Bill Kenny go through, and he's also done a wildlife assessment for the project. Bill should be on there, so.
Good evening, uh, Bill Kenny's here, Pat, are you all done?
Yeah, go ahead, go ahead.
Good evening, I'm Bill Kenny, the principal of William Kenny Associates in Fairfield. I'm a professional wetland scientist, soil scientist and landscape architect. And, um, since the last meeting, we did some additional work. Prior, prior to the last meeting, we had mapped the wetlands and we did a wetland impact assessment, which you had. So that was two separate letters. And then since the last meeting, we prepared the wetland buffer and site planting plan that you see before you. And, uh, really, it's a planting plan for the entire property. Uh, because although activities are being proposed on the site, there's no proposed buildings or parking lots at this time. It's really a regrading earthwork project and then a restoration of, of vegetative cover at the end of that regrading exercise, so, um, much of the site today is, is forested and, uh, much of that will be converted to a meadow habitat, which is shown in the light green on the project, uh, site, and then, um, north is to the right on this page as well. And see, I have the two wetland systems, ones at the top of the page or to the west, the other is at the bottom of the page or to the right. And, uh, so those areas will not be touched, none of the wetland areas are proposed to be touched. And we're proposing to then make most of the property meadow, but then restore forested habitat along the perimeter, the western end of the, uh, proposed grading area, the northern portion of the proposed grading area and the eastern portion of the proposed grading area. So, um, planting, proposing to plant, uh, quite a few trees, they're primarily going to be saplings, about 25 to 20% will be larger trees, uh, two to three inch caliber, but the rest will be about six feet tall. And so you'll have meadow habitat with these, uh, sapling trees growing in that habitat to help restore woodland in, in those perimeter areas over time. And then again, the, the primary area of the property, uh, where the earthwork is occurring will be restored or will be revegetated as a meadow habitat. And so, uh, the drawing includes the plan that you see as well as the plant list, plant list is at the top right-hand corner of the drawing. We did also review the property with regard to, um, wildlife habitat and, um, and that included, uh, reviewing the state NDDB, um, files. And then, and based on that and based on our review of the property and surrounding, um, properties, uh, we find that the habitat here is quite common habitat in the area and due to the development surrounding this to the southwest and east, um, that, uh, we don't expect any um, rare species, then there's certainly no rare habitat and the state has no record of any rare species or rare habitat at the property.
Questions for Bill? Question?
I'm good.
No question?
No. Yeah, no, I'm not sure. Let me ask you a question, the, the grading you, you proposed, is this, is this grading, um, what's the grade on the, on the level area? I'll simplify my question, is that, is that appropriate for, for you to put a building in or is this, once they design a building, they're going to come in here and regrade it again?
It did, it was based on a design of a building, but it is not known, that, known that that is going to be the ultimate building that is coming for. Based on the sign of a building and a parking area, and it broke away to that, yes.
I'm just, the, the plat, the, the level area is what, a 5% grade? 5% grade?
Yes, yes, so it's like a park, like supermarket.
But it's going to need to be, it's going to need a pad site, it's obviously going to be.
Becomes a pad site, it'll be left.
Can you just state your name, please?
Soil engineer, Mr. Eric, they dedicate 35 wetland bed. Here if you can. Um, so the, the plateau, or essentially 5% plat, area, lateral area, that is for a building, what that building is right now, we don't have 100% uh, sure about, but it's, that's, it's a compilation of all the projects that we've proposed for this in the past and what the height of the likelihood of where the building is going to be is where we, uh, placed that plateau. And then, so what you have is basically a building footprint that's going to be in this 5% area, uh, which can be easily leveled out, uh, either up or down, um, probably half and half. And then what we have is an accessway that has a, I guess, a parking field here in the front of the building. And then you have a driveway that comes around and then it goes above to the second level, about 10-foot difference or 12-foot difference. And then there's the parking area behind the building. We've had a proposal where it was two buildings split, where the loading docks were set lower than, uh, the actual pedestrian access to the building behind it, so that would, that was where you had your differential. Um, I'm trying to think of another thing, uh, we had, uh, an industrial, uh, it was an industrial, uh, condominium, so they had garages on the lower levels and then their offices were designated above. Um, and then, you know, just sports fields, uh, that's one, one, two, um, so, uh, whichever, whichever things come to fruition here, this is basically kind of to get the site in a, in a state where the, the marketability of the property becomes more attractive because the turnaround of the property is somewhere between the 12 to 15 month turnaround versus let's wait, uh, you know, someone wants to lease the property, it's going to take eight to eight to 12 months just to grade the property and then there's another 15 to 18 months for actual construction of the building.
The grading is, is confusing because it's going, it's going up to wetlands and it doesn't really, because you're taking a knob out.
The property is, the property is odd, right? So it has like this, has this knob here, here that kind of bisects the property.
Yeah.
And then you have that wetland to the right, which is really a product of the neighboring property squeezing the grade against our property and causing that swell, you know what I mean? So like, if you have, if your neighbor, right, you have a property that's a little higher and then your neighbor is a lot lower than you, but then he starts filling it in creating like, kind of a valley in between you and him, it's going to create a wetland there, or a swell. Um, that's how that, what, that basically develops, the diversion of water on that property going around it and along the property instead of going across it, dang. Um, and then, you know, the other side is just, you know, wooded area that's steep, that's rock that are overburdened and that's just steep and it goes towards the, uh, Spring Brook, or Spring Brook, is that Spring Brook? Is it with a Brook? I forget. Spring Hill Road, goes, which is the stream that goes along Spring Hill Road. Um, so what we're trying to do is try to create uh, a site that's ready for development and it's the grading, what we came up with was a grading plan that was kind of a compilation of what we anticipate and what's been proposed for in the past. Um, and really what has happened is that the timeline for the project is so far out that it scares me away. Exactly.
Okay.
So my, my only concern is that, uh, I'd like to hear you say that, that you're, you're, you're not concerned that your pushback in that area is not going to produce flooding in the other area where they sent your neighbors.
Right, so what we've done is actually diverted some of that stormwater away from that swell.
But not back to your neighbors, I mean?
No, so what we, we've done is we've collecting all the stormwater in this area that we've kind of directed it to this, uh, with these, uh, this is the wrong plan. Imagine that all my little control swells are here and then they come into this brick wrap, larger, uh, infiltration swell, uh, which then directs it to a temporary, a temporary cementation basin, it then overflows into a pot, a pipe that then goes into the large retention pond in the back. Which this whole property was anticipated for development and that pond was created. Um, so what we're essentially doing is we're taking the, we're directing this runoff through a controlled, through some structural control prior to going into the Brook, near Spring Hill Road.
So what is your, what's your, I mean, you, you, okay, so you gave us a close-up, you planned, how's the wetlands grade? How long does it stay raw before you try to establish some sort of cover while you wait for someone to, uh, purchase it? Cover, cover.
Cover, so the cover is going to be established immediately, so the the, the advantage of using solar control seeding?
You're planning on seeding it immediately upon.
Yeah, okay. But the whole point is to get the site stabilized, solar control methods and so that you don't have to have these structural defenses and technical ties there forever. Um, so that you create a meadow that's got to have a forested perimeter. Um, and then as soon as we get a tenant, we'll come back to this commission with a permanent, uh, development proposal and, and zoning. And if we're successful in those proposals, then that will have, uh, you know, building, pavement surfaces, other controls um, in, in, uh, whole system with a treatment tray, uh, possibly even some additional storage, permanent storage on site and then some mitigation or different mitigation, uh, plans than the one that is right now. So.
So this is their, this is their best guess at, at a palette that will be attractive to businesses.
Correct.
Makes sense.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, our town engineer, um, may have comments, I'm not sure, James? Still there?
So James DeMaio, town engineer. So I mean, right now with this project, I have a few minor comments that don't fully change a lot of the design of what the commission is looking at. A lot of it's like little technical information that's needed by the applicant. The one piece of information that I was looking for, because I wanted the commission to be aware of what's happening, is kind of like a pre and post watershed map to indicate, you know, more specifically, the amount of water that is being diverted from the wetlands to the east of the property, which they refer to as a swale. Again, I look at the plan, I see it as a wetland, a flagged wetland, therefore it's a regulated area. So I wanted the commission to be aware of the change of water to that regulated area. So I don't know if the applicant wants to speak on that one, but that's really the main wetland concern that I have at the moment.
Andy Sello from Rose Tiso again. So the, again, there's, in my eyes, which, you know, I'm a civil engineer, right? So the, not a wetland scientist or anything, but the the function of that wetland there is essentially to convey water and to have some habitat for to get around these two properties here to the south. And then in our watershed map, you can see that it goes to a culvert underneath 100 Technology Drive. And then out, and it meets the Spring Brook pass behind the 115 Technology Drive. Again, as the commissioner stated, there is, there would be a concern as to flooding the neighbor, right? So you have to kind of balance, you want to protect the neighbor from flooding, which is a mechanical thing, that's what civil engineers are for, you know, to kind of calculate that. Or it, and you have to balance the impact of, hey, are we reducing the supply of water to the well? I would say that the diversion, which is this small area here, basically from the ridge line towards that, towards that conveyance area where the wetland was, has been established or was created, is a minor amount of water that's being diverted away and it's being controlled in a fashion that's then it's going back into the same Spring Brook system or a spring that, that system that comes out near the Spring Hill Road. And that it actually would mitigate any kind of flash flooding, right? Because right now there's a steep slope there. It rains, if it rains down there, it's, you have an intense rainstorm. It's going to flash flood that area. But I think that the actual impact to the wetlands where the groundwater resides, which is what's really feeding the wetland itself, is minimal. It's a minimal impact. Because we're not really changing the groundwater levels by regrading. We're just changing the amount of surface water that's going to the well, which I think is beneficial because it stops any kind of flash flooding to the area. But again, what really feeds wetlands and what's important for wetlands is this high groundwater table. And, you know, I think the grading of this area, barring it, does really affect that groundwater table a little because we're not going below that elevation. So I think that's my answer to that.
Does that answer your question?
I don't know if Mr. Kenny wants to speak on the, on that wetland area and kind of explain the function of it and his professional opinion on the impacts.
The wetland, the eastern wetland?
Yes, sir.
Yes. So we did look at that and if you look at the overall watershed for that, the offsite watershed, I believe it's about 20, 25, roughly 25 acres. And the area on site that is being affected, look for a scale. Is quite a bit less than that, it's a small percentage of that 25 acre. And at this point, where the wetland is on the property, its primary function is water conveyance. So the offsite watershed is being maintained. This is a smaller piece of that watershed. So there will be some, I do believe there will be some reduction in water flow to that, to that wetland, to that water course, more of an intermittent water course. That, and it does get hyped. And then is primarily, it remains either as a pipe system or a channel system until it merges with, actually with the western wetland system, south, south of the property. So when you consider the offsite watershed is substantially larger, about it's 25 acres, and that this is a, primarily a conveyance system at, from about, from the onsite portion of this wetland and further south, that it remains primarily a conveyance system. I think that the minor reduction in the watershed area is not going to have a significant impact on that wetland and how it functions. That it'll continue to function the way it does today. And so.
And again, I'm good with that explanation. I just felt that the commission needed to be aware and have that information for them because I just didn't see it in any of the documents presented, so thank you.
Any other comments to involve, anything else?
No, because the rest of the comments are, from my standpoint, are very minor and technical of nature. Me and the applicant can work them out. No need to, you know, I don't see a point in delaying any applications for something like that. I wouldn't want to do that. I do have a slew of zoning concerns, but again, this, right now, the application's in front of wetlands. And yeah, that's all I have for now.
Any conditions you want us to put on this? Or you mentioned there were a couple of little things that you'd like to say?
So standard language for a condition of approval, I know Mr. Schultz can speak more on this, can just be to address town engineer comments as a condition of approval. Again, it's nothing major that will change what you are seeing here. It's mainly just double checking some information and just a little bit more information needs to be provided, that's all.
Something we can put together?
We can, we can create a draft resolution. But if, if they're going to leave the public hearing open, we're going to need a time extension. If not, we'll be okay.
Do we need to withdraw? That's why I asked.
It's up to you if you want to close it or not. If you've, you know, have, don't have any further questions or concerns.
All right, listen to the public.
Right.
Before we make that decision.
Absolutely, I'm just saying, you know, it's up to you if you want to.
I just want to see if you guys have any more questions for these guys before we open up to the public. Okay, so is there anybody on the floor here who'd like to speak? Up to the microphone, state your name and address.
Okay. My name's Derek Talbot. I live in 202F Wingate Circle. I'm here representing my father Edward, who lives at 257 Spring Hill Road. That would be just off the map there on the upper left hand side. One thing that I haven't heard mentioned in the last couple of meetings about this is all the water in the area in the various shades of green going to the detention pond, which is not in this picture. It's in Trumbull. And I think inland and wetlands of Monroe should be talking to inland wetlands of Trumbull to find out how that detention pond is currently operating and whether it can handle the water runoff from the area in the various shades of green here. I haven't heard any mention of that and I haven't seen anything in the documents that have been presented the last couple of meetings. I'm also concerned about potential blasting of the high area in the very light green area, which is going to affect foundations and wells in the various surrounding properties here. Also haven't heard very much mentioned about that either. Thank you.
The other question?
If you wanted to see if there's any more.
Well, one at a time here.
Manny Sello from Rose Tiso. So in the first meeting, I submitted a detailed engineering report about the drainage numbers. And I think we actually talked about how the pond had shown behind 115 was designed for this three lot subdivision originally on Technology Drive. And that we actually had a reduction in stormwater from the condition today to what's proposed by an 8% reduction at 50 years' warning. And then at the 100 year's warning, it's a 2% reduction. So the, you know, we did announce this, all of our proposals right now applied to what was originally designed in back in the late 90s and how that pond functions with the proposal that I had presented today. And it's, the capacity is there. Pond as it was designed in 1990 is still functioning as it was. In fact, it's actually become kind of a wet bottom basin. Where originally it was supposed to be a dry bottom, but it's tilted up a little bit. So it's a wet bottom basin now. So it has some wetland value now. And as far as blasting, I think we had a conversation with someone, with one of the commissioners about how that would happen. I said, we don't really say that, we don't anticipate there to be too much blasting because at 115, we anticipated it and then we had, I think we had that conversation with Commissioner Smith. And the blasting will be done with a permit with the fire marshal, with your local fire marshal and the state fire marshal. And the licensed blaster, if blasting is required, will then have a pre-blast survey done of the area of all their foundations and wells. If any damage were to occur due to the blasting, they have an insurance policy. So then we'll mitigate or remedy there for damage. Again, the, we don't really anticipate blasting, but if it happens, it will be done through the proper chair of the fire marshal's office.
Pat Rose from Rose Tiso. We did send a set of plans that's required to the Trumbull Wetlands Commission. I hadn't heard anything back from them.
Yeah, not either.
Appreciate it if we could, if we could close the hearing tonight, that'd be great. Would appreciate it if we think about deliberation tonight because we currently are scheduled for a special meeting tomorrow. So, insane.
I haven't created a draft resolution for this, this application.
Any other public comments from people here? Anybody online?
Hello? I first raised my hand. Yes, hi, I'm Kathleen Talbot, speaking on behalf of my dad also at 257 Spring Hill. And I'm just wondering if there could be any consideration? Someone had mentioned it's a heavily forested area, which it is. And I must say that's been a blessing because the building that's currently on Technology Drive, when the trees, when the leaves go down, the lights are incredible at night. You can see the traffic lights on 111 and the parking lot lights. So if there could be some consideration, I think, I don't know if that's Mr. Kinney, could we keep more of the heavily forested? I know you mentioned putting like tiny little trees in, but think of the people. At night, the lights don't go off. It's very, it's very disruptive. I would appreciate any consideration that could be made. So thank you for listening.
Sounds more like a planning and zoning concern?
Yeah, as a reminder, this is an excavation and filling. It's not a site plan because as you heard from the applicant, they don't have a tenant yet for the site. That would come up at the time that there is a submission. However, as you're aware, this plan does have a planting plan, but I don't think it fulfills the request that you're hearing tonight. That would be planning and zoning.
Planning and zoning concern.
Bring it up before they cut all the trees down as part of the excavation, right? Then it's too late.
Yeah. It's a very sensitive issue. As the commissioner, this is the last remaining lot of that four lot industrial subdivision. It went through a public meeting years ago. And this is the last lot left. You have the transitional area in the back. And that comes up every time we have a development of 111 and 25, as you know, as residents. So the commission, planning and zoning commission will be dealing with that particular issue in more detail.
Right. That's, that's what I expected, so, okay.
And as staff knows, commission requires dark sky compliant sight lighting. But it is an impact because trees are being removed. It's a bona fide building lot, industrial building lot. And it does impact the neighborhood.
But it will be addressed by planning and zoning?
Yes.
Okay. Anybody else online? Come on, state your name and address.
My name is Ryan Alexander. My name is Ryan Alexander and I am from Route 62 here in Monroe. And can you tell me which branch of government represents the inland wetlands commission?
France of government?
Oh, yeah, this is, this is a appointed commission done by the town council. Town councils are elected and they make appointments. There are, however, other boards and commissions that are elected, like the town council, like the planning and zoning commission. So this board here is appointed by the town council, which is the legislative body.
Okay. I believe it's required by the Department of Energy and Environmental Protection.
Yeah, this commission was created by statute through the state of Connecticut. So the hierarchy, as in all states, is the state legislators create laws that enact the creation of different bodies, organizations, et cetera. So the state of Connecticut created local inland wetlands commission. And the way that the commission is formed is through the town council legislative body and they appoint. Though our, however, towns where inland wetland commissioners are elected, most of them are appointed. So it starts at the state of Connecticut, state legislators. And then it goes down to the local community. And that's how they were created.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Then I think we need to make a motion to close this, right?
Motion to close the public hearing and direct staff to make a conditional memo of approval? Seconded.
Motion passed, all in favor?
And you're okay with making, with submitting time extensions for these to the next?
Yeah.
All right, so next we got enforcement. Looks like we got nothing there for the IWC agent activities report. All right. Annual discussions. Agents' report?
Our staff report that I sent to you, I listed a bunch of, there were six agent approvals that I've issued recently. I don't have them with me, but if you have any questions, I can try to answer them right now or you could, you know, during the week.
Something I've set out? Something I've put out?
Well, in, in the staff report, it also talked about the invasive species policy discussion, as we talked about earlier with, by Victoria, staff has reached out to an invasive species removal company, they're very busy up until November, so they would like to schedule either a Zoom or in-person to discuss policy with the commission, and they've done so, they're based in New Canaan, this particular company, but it could be another one, but this particular company has done presentations and health policy development in the town of Glastonbury with much success, so.
So you're still open to nominations for that, that role? I mean, if, you don't have them signed up yet for the role of the professional, I mean...
We're in discussions of when they can come and do it, and whether it's gonna be Zoom or in-person.
Okay, so they're, they're, they're selected already, or?
It's not, it's just, you know, I was just trying to find availability and who came, you know, recommended through other towns, and who's had, who's had the experience of working with towns to develop policy particularly, and they have, so.
Not recommended by Monsanto or Bayer? Okay.
Nope.
Okay.
Is there, is, is there someone from DP that wouldn't mind speaking to us?
I'm sure, I'm sure I could speak with somebody and see if they have availability, I don't know if it would be on the same, same time as that other person would be able to meet, but I could try to have someone from DP come.
Thank you.
With you guys as well.
All right, minutes?
You have three, Mr. Chairman.
All right, that's a minute, can we put it at the table until next time?
If the, if the commission didn't review them, I'm gonna seize them and...
All right, we'll, we'll table those. We'll table those. Regulation Amendment Committee?
Nothing, Mr. Chairman.
Lookout Reach Committee?
I think it's time.
Nothing on that? Well, I guess we come to a adjournment. Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Seconded.